Mr. Perry. Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Attorney Dempsey.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following. File of the Council Number 85, 2019, approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license owned by KGC Incorporated, doing business as J.J. Bridges, currently in safekeeping with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, formerly used at 925 Northern Boulevard, South Abington Township, Pennsylvania, 18411, for use at 100 North Main Avenue, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18504, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
There's nobody signed in to speak. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding the liquor license transfer?
Just got one quick thing. I don't know what that was about, but if it's somebody else coming into the city, I think it's a good idea, you know, want to welcome any business to move into the city. So I'm all for it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, meeting's adjourned.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all those who have passed away in our community, especially City Controller Roseanne Novembreno. We keep her and her family in our thoughts and prayers at this time.
Mr. Perry. Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Attorney Dempsey.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to take from the table file of the Council Number 78, 2019.
Second.
On the question, this piece is being taken from the table and placed into Seventh Order for a final vote. This ordinance pertains to the 2020 operating budget and was tabled to allow time for a public caucus. Anyone who wishes to speak on this particular piece of legislation may do so during Fourth Order Citizens Participation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
I'd like to make a motion to take from the table Resolution Number 183, 2019.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. This is being taken from the table and placed into Seventh Order for a final vote. This pertains to the contract with Speck and ISIT Associates for the downtown connectivity plan. Anyone who wishes to speak for this particular piece of legislation may do so during Fourth Order Citizens Participation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it and so moved. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order, 3A Agenda for the zoning hearing board meeting to be held December 11, 2019. 3B Single Tax Office City Funds Distributed Comparison Report, 2019, 2018, year to date November 30, 2019. 3C Tax Assessors Report, four hearing date to be held December 11, 2019. 3D Minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority, held November 6, 2019. 3E Minutes of the Civil Service Commission Meeting, held November 6, 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Fourth Order, Citizens Participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hoda-Wanitz.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, city resident and taxpayer. I would like to know the status of the independent audit, which was originally promised to us by Kohansky on September 30th, then December 1st, and today is December 9th. You're on the verge of passing a budget, and I would like to know when we're going to see that audit.
So we do not have a specific answer to that. What I can tell you is we received a preliminary confidential audit, which we have been asked not to share by our business administrator, Mr. Bolzoni. I can also tell you that the auditing service was due to be here today at 5:15 for us to ask follow-up questions on that precise topic. Unfortunately, with the budget, we had other issues that we needed to attend to, so they will now be here next Monday at 5:15, and we'll be asking them a lot of the same questions.
And that will be a public caucus?
It is.
Okay. I hope that if they're doing the audit for 2019, that you would put their engagement letter in Third Order. I would like to see that, to see what they're promising. I don't know whether you can answer this or not, but are we going to end 2019 with a structural deficit? And if so, do we have a ballpark figure?
From my last conversation with the mayor, they're expecting a small surplus at the end of the year.
Small surplus?
Small surplus.
All right. It seems to see how that follows up. I don't know if you all read the paper yesterday. There was a very interesting letter to the editor. It's called "Unsatisfactory Fine." Apparently, a woman was going to the Albright Memorial Library to pick up a book that she had requested. We're talking about a 10-minute type event, in and out. So she went to one of the kiosks, and I guess it was her first time using it, and, you know, did all the machinations, and it came up with her license plate in two hours or whatever, you know, the number was. And she thought she was good to go, so in she went, and out she came 10 minutes later, and she had a $25 fine. Now, I will read you part of her letter, because I just couldn't believe this, you know. "I called the phone number on the citation, and the person answering the phone told me politely that I must have failed to complete the transaction by entering the next option on the kiosk. She explained that there was nothing she could do, and that I could either pay the $25 fine or wait for a summons to appear before a magistrate judge. At that time, if found guilty, I could be charged $87. The following day, I followed up my call by visiting the ABM parking offices on Adams Avenue and received the same answer. I sent this information to the email address on the citation on November 18, suggesting that clearer instructions should be placed on a sign by the kiosks to help people unfamiliar with the new system, or at least to provide an exemption from the fine for one error per license number. No one has yet responded to my email. I expect better customer relations from the city's parking vendor." Now, I don't drive, by the grace of God, and, but I walk around town every day, and I am frequently stopped by people trying to figure out how to use the kiosk. So it's not as easy as some of you technologically savvy people might think. And I think it sends the wrong message to people, that, you know, well, everybody knows how to use it. A five-year-old can figure it out, okay? Whenever you have a new technological advance or change, there's going to be a learning curve. And, you know, to hit people up with the fine like this without giving them an opportunity to learn how to use the system, I just think it's wrong. I'm glad that I don't have to park downtown. I think, you know, we're charging a lot of money for people to park, and somebody needs to tell NDC, to tell ABM, to develop some better customer relations. I think the woman had a legitimate issue. She tried to do the right thing. Wasn't like she was trying to avoid paying for parking, but she couldn't figure out how to do it properly. And, you know, I just think we're shooting ourselves in the foot, the way we treat people coming to the downtown. So please, think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Les Spindler.
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. First off, my deepest condolences go out to the Novembreno family on Roseanne's passing. Known Roseanne for many number of years. Nicest, most wonderful woman you ever wanted to meet. She'll be sorely missed by her family and the city. She did a wonderful job as controller for, what, 30 years or whatever, and she'll be deeply missed. And, backing up what Joan said, when I come to town to buy something, I park in the mall and get my ticket validated, and I walk wherever I want to go. That's what everybody else should do. If they say, "What store were you in?", I just say, "Oh, it was the dollar store. They didn't have what I wanted." Okay. Last week, I heard on the news, read in the paper, about the mayor's State of the City address. And, to me, it sounded like, just like Donald Trump saying what a wonderful job he's done. I don't know what he's done. First of all, when he first got into office, he fired the lips director. That's nothing to hang your hat on. What accomplishment is that? Next, he's handing out $10,000 raises, like we're a city that has money we don't even know what to do with. We're still a distressed city, and he's giving out $10,000 raises. Lastly, this is the big one. Councilman Rogan, you weren't here two weeks ago when I spoke about this. This bright idea of putting the garbage fee in with the property taxes, it's illegal. A woman that works for a certified public accountant told me that night that it can't be done, that federal government won't allow a fee to go in with taxes. There's nowhere on a tax return to put a fee. How could you get your money back if it's not in? It can't be put in with taxes. And it makes sense. And his idea is ridiculous, anyway. If I wasn't paying my garbage fee and it was in with the property taxes, I'd just pay my property taxes. I hear, "I'm not paying the garbage fee." Does he think just putting it in with the property taxes is going to make everybody pay? No. It's a stupid idea. And as I said, it's illegal, and you shouldn't pass this budget before looking into that, because we don't need the federal government coming down on the city again. So, as I said, he did that without even knowing what he's doing. Probably never talked to an accountant. So council better look into it, because they'll come after him, and they'll come after you for passing the budget. Something else. I wish Mary Lette Cognetti good luck, and I hope she does a better job than this guy's doing. And I think she will. If who she has on her transition team is any indication, I think she's going to do a great job. Because I read in the paper where Bill Scranton is on her transition team. Know Bill for a number of years. His family's office was in the building I worked at for 21 years. Also knew Governor Scranton, who was the nicest man you ever wanted to meet. Whenever he saw me, he'd call me sir. And, but his son, Bill, is a very smart person. He was lieutenant governor. And by her putting him on her transition team, I think that says a lot about her. Plus, she graduated from Harvard. That's not too shabby. Lastly, I just want to make an announcement. Bob Bowles isn't here, but I know he's having his annual Christmas party, Christmas dinner, on a Christmas Day at St. Pat's Church, from, I think it's noon to 6:00. And this will be, let me, my 17th year volunteering for Bob. And it's a very rewarding thing. Everybody's invited. Doesn't matter if you're down on your luck, or you have luck, or whatever. Anybody's invited. So it's a very rewarding, for anybody who wants to come and volunteer, it's the first time I did it. I enjoyed myself, like I said, I've been doing it for 17 years now. So that's Christmas Day at St. Pat's Church or West Granton from noon to 6:00. Am I told, I'm told there's another meeting next week?
Yes.
Okay. I thought tonight might be last.
The mayor requested another meeting for some additional legislation.
But, again, I urge council to look into that problem. Like I said, we don't need the federal government coming down on the city again.
Thank you. Pat Hinton.
Good evening, Council. Pat Hinton, Scranton, and as you know, the former Licensing and Inspections Director. I'm here basically to talk about your favorite subject, the Licensing and Inspections and Inspections Department, which I think has gotten a bad rap for the past several years. I think a majority of that is due to you guys continually bashing that department unjustifiably. I know, because I was the director. And I recently heard Mayor Evans' speech down at the Chamber of Commerce, and some of his accomplishments he's talking about is cleaning up corruption. And associating me somehow, by firing me, that I was somehow associated with corruption. Well, I wasn't. I had nothing to do with it. But somehow, I got entwined with, you know, somehow I was involved. I was the head man behind it. Totally false. And actually, Mr. Donahue, I want to ask you about it. Couple months ago, you actually stated in a Green Ridge Neighborhood Association meeting in public that I was behind the criminal activity here, so I just wanted to know if you want to comment on that. Is that, is that no?
Go ahead. I'll comment in Fifth Order.
You don't have a comment now, though?
I'll comment in Fifth Order.
So basically, what I want to talk about is, again, the licensing department, and I want some justification or answers as to why just about every week, and believe me, for the last four or five years, you guys hit a number on that department and me, including slander in my name, just trying to discredit me, which is totally unfair. So what I want to know is, since, I know, Mr. Rogan, you said that next to potholes, the licensing department gets the most complaints. I'm just wondering, what are these complaints? Because in my opinion, I think it's all smoke and mirrors, and I think most of these complaints are not justified. So I'm just wondering, what are these complaints that this department gets?
Most of the complaints that I receive are from contractors for delays with permits. I know when you were director, we talked about this a number of times, and you helped us out a lot of times as well. That's a big one. We had some people at the meetings recently hold up with a permit over rental registration of a property. It was a simple issue. We got it straightened out. And then, most recently, I know with the Houdini Museum, where, again, they're upset about it, but we did inquire. The code requires a commercial contractor.
Correct. I understand contractors, but what are the nature of these complaints? That they can't get a permit? It's what?
That's typically what I'm hearing, delays with permits or not getting a permit.
Yeah, because I saw recently the individual from the Houdini Museum was in here complaining that he couldn't get a permit. I don't think the complaint was justified, because he didn't have the appropriate license. And I know you guys talked about trying to make it easier to work up there in the licensing department. But you know, for years, I tried to amend that legislation to make it easier for individuals to work in the city, okay? You guys denied me three times on that. And basically, it was left with what it is left with now. It's still difficult to get a license and to work in the city of Scranton. But I was trying to make these changes for the better, and I couldn't. I couldn't, because I was stopped by the former mayor, I was stopped by Mr. Bolzoni. I can go on and on and on. So that was it, just some contractors complaining about the office. I mean, does that justify almost every week council bashing that department? I just don't understand it.
Yeah, I can't speak for anyone else up here. I don't think I've ever bashed any department, other than when there were issues going on, talked about those issues specifically. But again, I can't speak for anyone else.
You know, when Wayne Evans was, he was appointed, he wasn't elected to mayor, and I think by a biased panel, I mean, you guys knew you were going to appoint him, but yet you threw up a smoke and mirrors show, having everyone come up here, trying to give their resume and why they're qualified, but you knew the whole time it was going to be Wayne Evans. So his first order of business was, hey, get rid of me, which in my opinion, it was naive, a cowardly, and hypocritical act, especially the way that he did it. Wouldn't he give me a chance to explain myself? Because had he done that, he would have known what I was trying to do the last several years. So in terms of involved in corruption, no, I was one of the few people fighting against the former mayor with this kind of stuff. And as a matter of fact, I was so concerned, at one point, I went to the law department and spoke to the solicitor. I got nowhere. Actually, the solicitor put her hands over her ears and just started laughing, said, "I don't want to hear it." So this is the type of cooperation I got, and this is what I've been led through for the last several years. And just briefly, I came into this department in 2014. The apartment, I don't think anyone realizes, was a total disaster. As a matter of fact, three things that happened that were interesting that happened was when I got there, half the department came to me and said that the former director and two employees were shredding a bunch of documents for two weeks in there, and took out the hard drive, wiped it out. The other thing I noticed is that that office had no system of doing business transactions. There was no cash register. So what did they do? They just stuffed checks and cash wherever they found it. I found over $15,000 in uncashed checks and cash all throughout that office. I tried to make big changes in that office, and I started for the first two years, but after I was making some big changes disrupting the status quo, the mayor got to me, Bolzoni got to me, and really put the pressure on me and gave me the name I got now. It's undeserved and unjustified, and I expect to be back again, because I do have a lot to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Elman.
Mary Walsh. About these ladies that are comprising the new school board, many like me believe that, oh, we're going to see eliminated are some properties tax-wise. And I'm going to tell you why I say that. This incoming conglomeration of bleeding hearts, they don't have it to say no. They're not going to say no to anybody. And why? Because Ms. Finnin has set a very bad precedent, allowing the teachers to bring back the furlough people, allowing all these new hirings and pensions. What we need is less teachers and larger classrooms. That's what's going to save the city. These are the people that are bankrupt, not us. I just don't understand the thinking here. People like Bond and Talarico go on and on, refusing to pay taxes. A man across the street, Mayor Evans makes a hero out of him. He owed $100,000 for four, five, six years on taxes. This doesn't make a bit of sense to me, to anybody. I told you all a couple weeks ago, I listened to some very successful businesspeople, professional people, talking about the politics of this city. All we got right now is the same old, same old with some new faces. There isn't, nothing going to change. People don't even know a thing about the incoming mayor. No history about her. To this very minute, I don't know what Jessica stands for. I might have voted for her instead of Mr. Perry if I knew what kind of program and platform she had in mind. I'm not the least bit mad at her. It just doesn't make sense to want, to be in here and not tell us what you're going to do. You know, I know you won't like me saying this, but I, like many others, are really just sick and tired of paying taxes for this school system that's being used for babysitting by a bunch of unwed mothers in the project, most of us above living with them, you know? I don't know the solution to that, but there's got to be one. Why can't, why can't the Licensing Bureau, I said this once before, why can't they start condemning all these houses from Talarico and Bond and so forth? There's bound to be something wrong with every single house in this city. I don't care if it's brand new. I've been told that by people in the Licensing Bureau. See, the reason is, nobody cares. You don't want to do nothing. It's just easier to say, raise the taxes 6.7, hire some new teachers to pay for it, you know? It's not going to end. It won't be much longer, and I'll just be so fed up, I won't come down here and bother you guys anymore. Monday's my wrestling. I just soon stay home and watch it like I did last week, you know? It just goes in one ear and out the other. You people just don't listen to these people out here and those people out there. You know, half the city doesn't have no one, don't have children in school. I don't know where they get the figures of how good it is. You drive around all these neighborhoods, half of them are in bad shape. No sidewalks, and broken sidewalks, and tore-up streets, and stop signs missing. Right by my house, somebody run over a stop sign, it's still laying there. Another one on the corner of Troup, it was laid there for three, four months before someone fixed it. But it doesn't matter, because they run the stop sign anyways. I don't know. Like I said, one of these days coming, I just going to be so fed up, I'll get out of your hair once and for all, and I just sit out there like I did 20 years ago.
Thank you, Ms. Elman.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Good evening, Council. You know, the one thing I have to say here today to begin with is that there's, it's very troubling when speakers come here to speak and try to engage the council and Mr. Donahue as an elected official. Mr. Hinton came here and was trying to enter into a dialogue with you, and that's one of the major problems we have in this city. We've elected people that don't ever say anything until the person that was at the podium can't respond or can't have any back-and-forth discussion on any issue. It's bad enough that the council itself has no real idea what's taking place in the city, and that their, in my opinion, their major purpose is to move money around and divvy up grants and, you know, tax people. But in order to make the city prosperous, you have to have an understanding of what needs to be fixed and how to fix it, to just bring up, you know, an issue. There's a host of other problems this city has, but I think the residents of this city fail to realize the real solution to this city's problems. And I'm waiting for the next administration to take its place here, because I really think the avenue of approach is in a courtroom. That's where I think all the answers lie. You know, when you look at the founding of the nation, okay, the court determined a lot of issues, and maybe it's time to bring the court forward and put this ball in their court. How much is enough tax to levy on the residents of this city? How much poverty should the residents have to endure? How long can a government not meet the requirements of a community? We've got people in this city that have flooding in their neighborhoods for decades. No answer, nothing. We get one shuffle from one person to another. Now, I think the other thing that's important is, here's this, this was created not by a stenographer, but this is word for word. This is somebody's, well, this is what was basically promised to the residents of this city. It's the next mayor who's coming in, but this is what she had to say at the debate. This is what her offer to us was. So here it is, it's in writing, word for word, typed out. And you know what I think? I think it's time to start keeping the record here. Don't rely on YouTube. You failed your own constituents, because you're obligated to preserve the record, not YouTube. That's pathetic. And you see what's happening with our president. That's also pathetic. And when, you know... And when, you know, you don't want to be partisan because really, in my own opinion, I think we should throw all the Democrats out of office first and then throw all the Republicans out and fix the country because it's really very, very ill. America's a very poor country, a very, very poor country. Had the discussion with Mr. Andrews on the radio the other day and highlighted the people living down by the river on Gordon Avenue. You start thinking about it and said, wow, you know, we got to have a show on that because I never looked at it like that. No, because people aren't looking at a lot of things. People want to get elected, they want to put their cute little suits on and their outfits, and they want to pretend like they know something. And then when they get here and they can't do anything because they don't know anything, they create authorities, and they just borrow, spend money, and then everybody's obligated to pay it back. This Scranton School District isn't functioning for its students. The education there they receive is so substandard, and you have to ask yourself one question. What is your state representative and your state senator doing for your children in the Scranton School District? And where have they been? Not for one year, not for 10 years, but decades. And this council, almost 30 years in distress, coming out to go into poverty and to go into bankruptcy, in my opinion, because this city is not solvent. We can't even get an answer on where our parking spaces are under the mall that we paid millions of dollars for. So, you know what? Honestly, what value do you and the rest of our government bring to the residents of this city and to the residents of this country that you've been elected to serve? Think about that.
Thank you.
So I understand there's going to be a meeting here next week, but I am not able to come. I'm here tonight for only one reason, and that is to thank Councilwoman Dempsey for her incredible work in City Council. She's only been here a few months, and my gosh, she's done so much that some council members haven't done in years. I myself and Marie have met with her, and she gave us all the time in the world, and she went over everything, and she's really, really, Attorney Dempsey's been with the people from the day she sat here until now. And it's a shame that she has to go, and I only wish she could stay because, wow, did she do a lot of work. And she's, it's refreshing to see someone just so dedicated to make things turn around and do things right. And I saw that and knew Mrs. Dempsey, and we really appreciate it. I don't just speak for myself. I speak for thousands of people in this city, and I only hope the city could hire you as a consultant or something because it's going to be a shame to see you go. And I hope that you could give them input or something, but it wouldn't be fair to you, but it'd be nice for the people. But again, like I said, you really, really left an impact on this council, and don't ever forget it, and know how much we appreciate it. And don't take that lightly because it's really, really, very important to know the work that you put in, that most people wouldn't even think to do because you're only here for a pretty time. You put in more work than people have done in years, and thank you very, very much for all the people in Scranton.
Thank you.
First, I would like to thank the DPW for the tremendous job they did on the snow last They were out with, of course, I'm close to a firehouse, so we probably get a little bit faster action, but before the snow even started, they were out putting the salt down, which was a tremendous help. And they came by and they didn't dump it all on our sidewalks again with all the stuff. And so I really appreciated that. Now, the budget, are you going to be making amendments to the budget?
Yes.
There will be amendments. Are they going to be brought forward tonight or not until next week?
Tonight.
Tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, and just, I don't understand this. The budget was sort of strange this year, I thought, and particularly, again, I spoke on the Chief of Staff, which I still think is and would be an insult to the mayor, the incoming mayor. But if it's in the forward letter to the council, but the dollars aren't in the budget, it's not really in the budget, is it? And if somebody ever decided to add that position, that would have to come before this body?
Do you want me to answer this now?
That's a question mark. Sure.
Okay. So we're actually taking, I'm going to make an amendment to take those out, and my reasoning is, without going on and on and on, taking up too much of your time, I disagree with putting money in the other salary because it sets a precedent then that it's not in the budget, and it should be in the budget. Again, you know, I don't necessarily, excuse me, disagree with the Chief of Staff position. We don't know what the job description looks like. There's no rationale behind it, and as we discussed in caucus, you're not going to get a Chief of Staff for $35,000 anyways, so we plan on taking out several of those potential, I wouldn't even call them positions, we're just cutting the other salary.
Well, that's, I just wanted to make sure that if it ever came to pass, it would come before this body, and we would have another chance at it. Again, the trash, I think what's being done with the trash is unfair, and I think there's got to be a better way. And the stormwater, I don't think this body has ever decided on whether or not there's going to be an authority or whether it's going to be kept in-house. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct, because we still have not received the analysis being done by HRG, I think is the company.
HRG, yeah.
They're still not even done yet with their analysis, so.
But you did have the long-awaited study of last year.
That was the initial analysis, right.
But that was all based pretty much on an authority and a stormwater fee.
Right. This company that they hired last year, the year before, right, HRG?
Actually, it was this year, yeah.
Yeah, they're the company that worked with the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority to create that whole system down there.
Yeah, yeah. I read their proposal, yeah.
Right.
So, when should we expect that?
We actually received some, I just received something in my mailbox tonight, and it says MS4 update. I haven't had a chance to look through it yet. We're going to meet next week, so I'll provide an update next week on it, but I don't know if it's going to be done by the, before the end of the year, I should say.
Okay, and what about the open positions? Why are they not being advertised?
Which?
I don't understand. We've got, which?
Which?
Well, we've got zoning. Poor Donnie King has planning, he's got zoning, he's got, he's working on that, on the SAPA program. I mean, that's a lot of work for one person.
You mean board members? Or do you mean positions within the administration?
Yeah, yeah.
That would be the prerogative of the administration. I don't know the answer to that question, to be honest with you.
Are they just doing that to maybe get a little bit of a surplus at the end of the year?
I don't know.
Nobody's going to take those jobs for two months.
I know. I mean, it's long overdue. Those are valid positions, but it seems we're playing games to not pay money out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
See you next week.
Is there anyone else?
Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident, and I was not, as I always say, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but as I sit there and listen to some of the participants say things that I don't agree with, I either say something here now or I talk to the TV screen when I watch it. So I choose to offer my concerns of what I've heard tonight. And I have to agree with Joan when she said about the article, the letter that was in the paper, and there are people that have been talking about it because everyone doesn't have a credit card, they just, there's a lot of assumptions with the new system. One of them is the credit card. One of them is that everyone is, like Joan said, is, I start to say PC savvy because everybody's not savvy about modern technology. And I've even had one person say that a senior citizen came into their restaurant and needed one of the waitress to come out and help them do whatever they needed to do with the parking meter. So I'm not sure how much investigation went into it, what kind of focus groups or anything that they had before they put that system in, but I too have heard people tell me about the parking situation in Scranton. So I had to say something tonight to address the letter that was in the paper. Also, there are two comments about the school district. I'm a product of the Scranton School District, and of course, that was many years ago, and things have changed. But I also know that each week in the paper, there is the high school students, I think that's the name of it, but they highlight a student every week in the paper, in the Scranton Times, of what they've done. And if you look in there, you'll see Scranton High School name in there every week, and there are students that have done excellent things in the school district. So there's a lot of good going on there. If you hear and you've heard their choir sing, they do an excellent job with those kids and those choirs. The football team, they do an excellent job. There's a lot of good going on in the Scranton School District. I don't have any kids there. My kids are on the West Coast, you know, they were not educated here. We grew up in New Jersey. But there's a lot of good going on in the Scranton School District. So when I hear people saying about the school district, you know, everything, there's good and there's bad. So let's look at the good rather than the bad because there's a lot of good going on there. And as far as all the females going into the system, that's why we have voting, and that's what happened with voting. If those people voted, then they deserve the right to go in and try to make the school district better. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. Mrs. Dempsey, I'm also sorry to see you leaving. Maybe there's a position open here in a couple of weeks, you know? Might want to consider it. No offense to Amal, if he wants to retire, that's up to him, you know? Maybe he'd like to be asked to come back. I don't know there either.
I'm not retired, I'm resigned.
Resigning? Okay, you're sick of me, huh? Now, two weeks ago, Joan mentioned that she was resigning from the commission, and I would hope that somebody would ask her to reconsider and also reconsider some of the problems she pointed out. She's really an exceptional person for the job. And hopefully, I see we're meeting next week. I hope we keep it a little tighter because, like she said last week, five weeks off is not good. And by the way, we have MLK Day right after the first meeting, you know? So that's many, many weeks already. Now, not this week, but someone was making remarks about people's personal lives, and I say once again, practice worship, observe, and keep it in your hearts and in your home if you want, but keep religion out of government. It's the right-hand maiden of tyranny and despotism. And furthermore, there was a significant preacher on last week, a few days ago, called anybody that opposes Trump demonic, you know? Well, maybe we should review his tax-exempt status because that's what the law says. Time to start paying taxes if you want to run around calling people all kinds of names unjustifiably. And I'm going to start trash talking again. Last week, you mentioned a few things under your motions. I have not seen or heard of any attempt at collecting back trash fees for years now. It's been an issue. It was an issue when Mayor Dougherty was in office. A year before he left office, he threatened to put liens on. Now, from what I understand, the welfare-type liens, if I didn't pay my taxes for my trash fee for 10 years now, and I died at 75 years old or something, and somebody sold my house and somebody elected to or whatever, and it had a clean title, under the title search, would that not be discovered?
Yeah.
That $3,000 we're owed in back trash fees and there's a lien against it, that would have to be settled upon closing. Am I right?
That's correct.
You know? Yeah, we had to have tax or welfare liens from the '30s when we bought a house in Scranton like 50 years ago, you know, when I was with mom and dad. So the point being that nothing has been done to make the old system work, and under the new system, I'm not sure that a lot of people with businesses and required to have dumpsters are going to appreciate paying $250 more a year on their building. I certainly won't appreciate if it does get slipped in vacant lots because it's directly next door to my house. And I kept it separate so that if I defaulted on taxes for the lot, I still have my house, you know? But the point in being also, in towns with trash pickup, pay to throw, we moved into an apartment house in 1988, and within two months, the mayor and the town policeman were at our front door screaming in my wife's face, who wasn't working at the time, she was in between jobs, and about all the trash. Well, the girl upstairs said, that's your trash. Well, she got out the coupon book, and they were sort of apologetic. But you see how that got started? There must have been 50 bags there. Believe me, you don't want her down here after somebody yelled in her face.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yes. First, I'd like to just send my condolences to Mrs. Novembreno's family. She was a wonderful lady, and, you know, 30 years of service to the city should be commended. In response to Mr. Hinton, I did say that at a Green Ridge neighborhood meeting because in my first 18 months on this council, I would, week after week, send up requests to licensing inspection, and so would my colleagues, with zero response, week after week. And it was, I would put complaints for licensing inspections actually above complaints for potholes. And then you add on to that, you know, we've had multiple federal lawsuits. We settled one for about 250 grand. I think there was, there's about three more still out there. And also, you know, the pay-to-play involving the mayor. Whether you knew or not, you were responsible for that office. That was your responsibility, and I'll leave it at that. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Attorney Dempsey, any motions or comments?
Yes, actually, I'm going, I have no motions. I'm going to refrain from making my budget comments until later on both the budget and the amendments. I, again, have to speak to Mr. Elman. You have, again, succeeded in offending me. I don't know what the problem here is with you and women. The comments were offensive and chauvinistic. You got up here and you started to talk about the ladies of the school board. There is also a male member of the school board, and Ms. Cruz is sitting here in the back, and I'm sure she was taken aback and insulted by it as well. And one of your comments was, they can't say no. What does that even mean, they can't say no? And why would you make that generalized comment about women in general? The comments were demeaning, and they were disheartening. And then you started to talk about Mayor Let Cognetti and Dr. Rothschild. May I remind you, one has an MBA from Harvard, and may I remind you, the other one has a PhD. And again, you called them ladies. And then you spoke about an unwed mother in the projects. What that has to do with anything, I don't know, but I do know one thing. The unwed mother, it was not an immaculate conception. So there's men involved. So there's men involved in that as well, and yet you didn't bring that issue up at all. This is the second or third time I've had to address this, and I don't understand what this ongoing thing is against women. It is insulting. It's unacceptable. It's violative of our rules of council. Honestly, I think it's about the third time I've asked that either our council president or a solicitor step in the next time they hear these comments and ask you to stop them. I think it's unfair to anyone in this room who has an aunt, a daughter, a sister, or a wife to sit here and to listen to those comments, and I don't think any of us should acquiesce in silence when we hear them. I'm going to ask you again to refrain from those comments in the future. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yes, I just wanted to also send my condolences to the family of Rosa Novembreno. I mentioned a few weeks ago when she had retired, you know, how, in my opinion, and I think in many others in this building and across the city, that she was one of the kindest, most compassionate people involved in public service in the city of Scranton. And I, you know, in the last few days since she passed away, thinking about when I first got involved on council and in public service, she was one of the first people that extended a hand, and her door was always open. And I know that the employees who worked in her office and worked for her held her in the highest esteem. She really was one of the most well-respected public officials and well-respected people, not only in government, but throughout the city of Scranton. So again, we're, we lost somebody that was, I think, one of the best people and one of the most well-respected people in this building. And again, to approach that position with the compassion and with the kindness that she did and the way that she interacted with the public and with people, I think, should be commendable. So I want to say God bless her and God bless her family at this time. The only other thing I want to mention is the rescue mission on Olive Street. I know there was an article in the newspaper today. We did receive a, or I received a phone call from a gentleman in that area, and some of the neighbors are complaining again. This is a recurring problem. I know it got a little bit better based on some of the efforts made months and months and months ago to clean the property up. But apparently, according to this gentleman, there are some issues that are occurring again. So Mrs. Reed, if we can just send a follow-up letter to the rescue mission, one of the recommendations after speaking to this one gentleman was maybe someone from the establishment could do a check at least once every 24 hours. There seems to be issues with clothes and debris and other things. So if we can do that, and I know the Licensing and Inspections Office is aware of it, but if we can just send something again to them or copy them on the letter, I would appreciate it. And I'll, oh, the only other thing I want to mention is if we can please place, Mr. Bolzoni responded to our budget questions. We had, I don't know, four, five, six pages of budget questions. He did respond. We received them last Wednesday. If we can place those in third order for the next meeting so that the public can see how he responded, I would appreciate it. And I'll save the rest of my comments for agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you. I will also save my comments for agenda items.
5B for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with neighbor works of northeastern Pennsylvania, 1510 North Main Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 1A508, to create, establish, and administer the city of Scranton's homebuyer program.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I went through this legislation. I understand what is trying to be done here. I know we received a confidential memo on this issue. I haven't, we just received it tonight, so I haven't had a chance to take a look at it. But what I would recommend is if we can have the director of OECD, if possible, come into our caucus next week, just so we can have a conversation on this piece. And I think I'd like to get maybe a better sense of why we're doing this, and if things aren't working in OECD with this, in terms of this program, I think maybe a little bit more background on why. And I'm not against this. Again, I'm still reviewing it, but I think that would be helpful to get some background on that from the director. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction of resolution, reappointment of Michael Muller, 830 Taylor Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 1A510, as a member of the Historical Architecture Review Board. Michael Muller's term on the Historical Architecture Review Board expired on October 11, 2016, and was held over until November 20, 2019. His new term will expire on October 11, 2021.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction of resolution, appointment of Thomas Tanzitz, 17 Terrace Drive, pardon me, Scranton, Pennsylvania 1A505, as a member of the Scranton Parking Authority effective October 1, 2019. Thomas Tanzitz will replace Joseph Wexler, who resigned effective February 5, 2019. Thomas Tanzitz will fulfill the unexpired term of Joseph Wexler, whose term is scheduled to expire on June 1, 2020.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction of resolution, appointment of Norma Jeffries, 619 Colfax Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 1A510, as a member of the Shade Tree Commission, effective October 11, 2019. Norma Jeffries is replacing Ann McNally, whose term expired on October 29, 2017. Norma Jeffries is appointed to a five-year term, which will expire on October 11, 2024.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. Just want to thank Mrs. Jeffries for always coming to our meetings, first of all, and getting appointed to this board, and I know she'll do a great job, as will all the other appointments. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction of resolution, reappointment of William Lesniak, 314 Pittston Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 1A505, as a member of the Historical Architecture Review Board. William Lesniak's term on the Historical Architecture Review Board expired on October 11, 2017, and was held over until November 15, 2019. His new term will expire on October 11, 2022.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G for introduction of resolution, appointment of John R. Finnerty, 622 Wintermantle Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 1A505, as a member of the Planning Commission of the City of Scranton, effective December 31, 2019. John R. Finnerty will be replacing Pastor Anthony Ishmael, whose term is set to expire on December 31, 2019, and will not be reappointed, creating a vacancy on the commission. Mr. Finnerty's term will expire on December 31, 2023.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the council number 80, 2019, and ordinance amending file of the council number 6, excuse me, 1976, entitled, "An Ordinance As Amended, Imposing A Tax For General Revenue Purposes On The Transfer Of Real Property Situate Within The City Of Scranton, Prescribing And Regulating The Method Of Evidencing The Payment Of Such Tax, Conferring Powers And Imposing The Duties Upon Certain Persons, And Providing Penalties By Imposing The Rate Of The Realty Transfer Tax At Two And Two-Tenths Percent For Calendar Year 2020, And The Same Shall Remain In Full Force And Effect Annually Thereafter."
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6B, reading by title, file of the council number 81, 2019, and ordinance amending file of the council number 11, 1976, entitled, "An Ordinance As Amended, Enacting, Imposing A Tax For General Revenue Purposes In The Amount Of Two Percent On Earned Income And Net Profits On Persons, Individuals, Associations, And Businesses Who Are Residents Of The City Of Scranton Or Non-Residents Of The City Of Scranton, For Work Done, Services Performed, Or Business Conducted Within The City Of Scranton, Requiring The Filing Of Returns By Taxpayers Subject To The Tax, Requiring Employers To Collect The Tax At Source, Providing For The Administration, Collection, And Enforcement Of The Said Tax, And Imposing Penalties For The Violations By Reenacting The Imposition Of The Wage Tax At Two And Four-Tenths Percent On Earned Income For Residents And One Percent On Earned Income For Non-Residents Of The City Of Scranton, For Work Done, Services Performed, Or Business Conducted Within The City Of Scranton For The Year 2020, And The Same Shall Remain In Full Force And Effect Annually Thereafter."
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B pass reading by title.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6C, reading by title, file of the council number 82, 2019, and ordinance amending file of the council number 43, 2018, and ordinance amending file of the council number 100, 1976, entitled, "An Ordinance As Amended, Leaving General And Special Taxes For The Fiscal Year 1977 By Setting The Millage For The Year 2020, And The Same Shall Remain In Full Force And Effect Annually Thereafter, By Amending Section 1, Reverting Back To The Millage Rates From 2016, Which Are .232521 Mills Levy On Land And .050564 Mills Levy On All Buildings, And By Eliminating The Dedicated Millage For Debt Service Contained In Section 2, And Replacing The Dedicated Millage For Debt Service With A Dedicated Debt Percentage Of 33% Of Real Estate Tax Revenues Collected On A Current Year Basis."
You've heard reading by title of item 6C. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6C pass reading by title.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6D, reading by title, file of the council number 83, 2019, and ordinance amending file of the council number 147, 1986, entitled, "An Ordinance Providing For The General Revenue By Imposing A Tax At The Rate Of Two Mills Upon The Privilege Of Operating Or Conducting Business In The City Of Scranton As Measured By The Gross Receipts Therefrom, Requiring Registration And Payment Of The Tax As Condition To The Conducting Of Such Business, Providing For The Levy And Collection Of Such Tax, Prescribing Such Requirements For Returns And Records, Conferring Powers And Duties Upon The Tax Collector, And Imposing Penalties By Imposing The Business Privilege Tax At The Rate Of One Mill For Calendar Year 2020, And The Same Shall Remain In Full Force And Effect Annually Thereafter."
You've heard reading by title of item 6D. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6D pass reading by title.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6E, reading by title, file of the council number 84, 2019, and ordinance amending file of the council number 148, 1986, entitled, "An Ordinance Amending File Of The Council Number 98, 1976, As Amended, And Imposing A Mercantile License Tax Of Two Mills For The Year 1987 And Annually Thereafter Upon Persons Engaging In Certain Occupations And Businesses Therein, Providing For Its Levy And Collection And For The Issuance Of Mercantile Licenses, Conferring, excuse me, conferring And Imposing Powers And Duties Upon The Tax Collector Of The City Of Scranton, And Imposing Penalties Effective January 1, 1987, By Imposing The Mercantile License Tax At One Mill For Calendar Year 2020, And The Same Shall Remain In Full Force And Effect Annually Thereafter."
You've heard reading by title of item 6E. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6E pass reading by title.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6F, reading by title, file of the council number 85, 2019, and ordinance approving the transfer of a restaurant liquor license owned by KGC Incorporated, doing business as JJ Bridges, currently in safekeeping with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, formerly used at 925 Northern Boulevard, South Abington Township, Pennsylvania 1A411, for use at 100 North Main Avenue, Scranton, La Cuenca County, Pennsylvania 1A504, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
You've heard reading by title of item 6F. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6F pass reading by title.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance For Adoption, file of the council number 79, 2019, authorizing the issuance of a tax and revenue anticipation note series of 2020 in the principal amount not to exceed $12,750,000, providing for the date-of-date, interest rate, maturity date, redemption provisions, payment and place of payment in respect of the note, accepting the proposal attached here too as Exhibit B from the financial institution named therein for the purchase of the note, naming a sinking fund depository paying agent, authorizing the proper officers of the city to execute and deliver the note and certain other documents and certi, excuse me, certificates, in connection therewith, authorizing and directing the preparation, certification, and filing of the necessary documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, setting forth a form of the note.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Works For Adoption, Resolution Number 195, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application by the city of Scranton to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Small Water And Sewer Program in the amount of $418,774 to be used to install new and more efficient inlets and larger pipes to adequately convey the runoff on Briggs Street to Kaiser Creek, its original outlet point.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Works For Adoption, Resolution Number 196, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to apply for and execute a grant application by the city of Scranton to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Small Water And Sewer Program in the amount of $179,575 to be used to replace existing storm arch structure with a new concrete arch structure on Bloom Avenue.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, previously tabled for consideration by the Committee on Finance For Adoption, file of the council number 78, 2019, appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2020, to and including December 31, 2020, by the adoption of the general city operating budget for the year 2020.
I'd like to make the following motions to amend item 7D per the following, and I'm going to make these motions individually. First, I'd like to amend account number 01.301.30706, real estate taxes to increase the dollar amount from $18,800,589 to $19,366,031.15.
Is there a second? Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question. I'm going to just take this time now, I might as well, to comment on the budget and if I can on this motion, because it all ties in together, if that would be, I think that's okay with everyone. So first, let me just comment on the budget, and then I'm going to explain the several motions that I'm going to make. I appreciated the mayor and Mr. Bolzoni and our recovery coordinator coming to a budget caucus last Wednesday, and I have to be honest, it's the first time in six years that we were actually allowed to have an open and an honest conversation in public about issues that face the city. I could never, for the life of me, understand, since I've been on council since 2014, why we were never able to get everyone around a table in a room and discuss these things. It was always rushed. It was always at the 11th hour. We were given things 45 minutes before the caucuses. And so at least for the first time in a long time, we were able to have a conversation. able to have a conversation. I was disappointed that it was cut short because I think there were still some things that council wanted to zero went on and discuss, but it was very informative. First, I do understand that the budget is a relatively fluid document and that no budget is perfect. Some years' projections are on target, other years they're off because of a number of factors. What is true since I've been on council and long before that is that the city continuously faces systemic issues that no magical solution can fix, not even the long heralded exit from Act forty-seven distress status. Scranton, like many other cities across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, cannot afford the legacy costs that we are saddled with, whether it be union contracts, pension benefits, healthcare, longevity, on and on and on. The state of Pennsylvania has failed every municipality in the state with their revisions to Act forty-seven. As usual, they ignore the root of the problems that face cities and attempt to cure them with a superficial boot from distress status as if will be cured when we come out next summer, which we won't, and that was confirmed by the Pennsylvania Economy League and other officials at our caucus on Wednesday. While there has been progress made, there's no question about that, the city cannot continue on the path that this budget takes us, which is reliance on one-time revenue and maybes, what-ifs. We were told by the administration that there are a lot of moving parts, and there are a lot of moving parts. This is a complicated budget in many aspects. We're now entering our fourth year without a tax increase, when our exit plan calls for modest tax increases over time. One thing that I was kind of struck by that the Pennsylvania Economy League had given us was this chart on tax rate changes. From nineteen ninety-one, and there's a trend here that I'd like to point out, from nineteen ninety-one to nineteen ninety-eight, there was no tax increase. Then from nineteen ninety-nine and the year two thousand, major double-digit tax increases. Two thousand one to two thousand six, no tax increases. Two thousand seven, major double-digit tax increase. Two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, no tax increase. Two thousand eleven, taxes were actually decreased by eleven percent on land and eleven percent on improvements. Then from the years two thousand twelve to two thousand sixteen, major double-digit increases in taxes. And then now we're on a trend again, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, no tax increase. So the point I'm trying to get at here is the reality of the situation, although unfortunate as it is, and as the financial advisors warned us and made very crystal clear, if we don't raise taxes modestly this year, we may be looking at a punitive double-digit increase in the next year or two. It's a pretty simple equation. Our revenue bottoms out and our expenditures continue to increase. This budget had to be balanced on another quick fix, which is a one-time sale of assets with the sale of refuse receivables. That gets us through next year, and then what? And then what? And then what? And then what after that? So what I'll be recommending tonight to my fellow council members is what I feel is the responsible path to take. I understand that it will not be the popular path. I'm going to be requesting a modest tax increase, which would come out to about ten dollars and fifty cents on the average homeowner, along with several reductions in expenditures so that we don't, as our recovery coordinator put it, fall into the trap of delaying it and then crushing people in the next year or two. I'm talking about being realistic and being honest with people. We sat around the table last Wednesday and we heard from our recovery coordinator and our business administrator that if we don't modestly increase taxes this year, we're going to do it next year, but it won't be modest. It may be punitive, and then the year after that. And then as the Pennsylvania Economy League noted, and I just want to read a quote from what they had said, and this is a fact, "We see one-time revenue, quick fix," that's what's been going on here for the, as long as anybody can remember, "a sale of assets to fix a cyclical deficit." Past history of the city shows, which I just held up with the chart, that we will have a tax increase next year and the year after. Then you'll have a structural, if we don't do that, we fall into the trap, we'll have a structural deficit that is large. It will grow over periods of time, and it will then get to the point, like a few years ago, when you'll have to lay out people with punitive tax increases. In the past, the city has waited until the problem has compounded, and then taxes go through the roof. So you can't just sit back and pat yourselves on the back to say that we can't raise taxes. And that was our recovery coordinator's words, not mine. Now, over the last few years, I've had serious concerns with the budgets presented to council, and this one is no different. I do have several concerns, and we were able to discuss some of them as we sat around the table last week. One of my concerns is that expenditures, I think, were out of control in many respects over the last few years. Since I took office in two thousand fifteen, we have had major increases in capital expenditures, departmental and non-departmental expenditures. I laid out the last few weeks those dollar amounts. One example that I can pull out, which I think shows the lack of foresight by city officials in the past, is a new public safety building that we have. Some of it was funded with grant money, other was, other money came out of the budget. These are things that we take on when we don't have a plan to maintain them. We don't have the resources to maintain it. It's great to have a new public safety building, and maybe it's warranted, but we can't afford it. We couldn't afford it, and that's the reason I voted against it last year, and that's just, or a few years ago. Unfortunately, these, this spending, while some of it was necessary, that ship has sailed and there's nothing we can do about it. I want to state for the record that the mayor's plan to roll the refuse bill into the real estate tax bill, while I don't necessarily disagree with it, and I think it makes sense, it's riddled with issues that have not been addressed to date, and I want to check through a few of them. Number one, legislation authorizing the lowering of your refuse bill from three hundred dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars will not come down this year. It will come down next year. So council will not end up passing that legislation, if it even goes through, until the end of January, early February. The real estate tax bills go out in February, so, and I've had this conversation with the administration, is it even realistic to expect that the tax office is going to be able to do all of this work and put the, your refuse bill in the real estate tax bill in this short amount of time? It's not clear that that can even be done, so that's number one. Number two, I think the, the plan, the way it's set up is inherently unfair. For example, a business that now pays a private hauler, under this plan, will pay a private hauler, but will also pay the two hundred and fifty dollar garbage fee for a service that they don't receive. Now, we were told by Mr. Price, one of the city solicitors, that there is precedence for this and that there was a legal case showing that it can be done, and I don't disagree with him on that, but it's unfair. You cannot expect, if we're trying to get business in the city, you can't expect businesses to stay here when they're paying for garbage pickup from a private hauler, and then they have to pay the city for a separate fee. The same thing in terms of landlords. Now they're getting charged, if they have three units, they get charged for each unit. Under this plan, they would just get one bill for two hundred and fifty dollars, so people are skating for free. On the other hand, landlords who have more than four units, who have to pay a private hauler, now they have to pay both a private hauler and the two hundred and fifty dollar fee. Again, this thing is riddled with issues that I think have not really been addressed yet. The plan is also built upon maybes, the electronic recycling program. They put three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget for this program. I don't disagree with it, but it, it has to receive approval from DEP. There has to, there's so many steps that they have to go through. How many months is that going to take? The pay-as-you-throw program that they talk about being implemented, there's, could be a lot of issues with that. That hasn't even been fleshed out yet. And then this amnesty program that keeps being talked about. I don't necessarily disagree with it, but we don't know enough about it, and it is, hasn't, the numbers haven't even been quantified yet. Healthcare increases. I know Attorney Dempsey's going to go into this in more detail than I will because she has a great background in it. I said last year that they were underestimated. I thought my concerns were ignored. They were, it was underestimated. One of the things that came up in our meeting was that healthcare analysis isn't, they don't put it in writing, our healthcare administrator, which is a huge concern. Retiree healthcare came up last Wednesday at our caucus. Major increase in long-term liability for the city. It's something that, one of the reasons why I voted against the contracts, the police and fire contracts back in two thousand fifteen. Mr. Bolzoni said it's, he's unclear on how to even quantify that cost yet. We don't know the future cost. There was an article in the Scranton Times a few years ago that stated that there's a possibility that that could be a budget buster. It's something that we gave back, that we, I don't think we'll be able to bargain now off the table, and it's one of the moves that continues to get us in the financial quagmire that we always seem to find ourselves in. The conversion from the business privilege and mercantile tax to payroll prep, I agree with it, but it carries some uncertainty. What will the school district do? And then there's other questions that go along with that. And finally, the lack of answers to questions over the years has always bothered me. Last year, I asked a number of questions. I got answers, they weren't to my satisfaction. It left a lot to be desired. Mr. Bolzoni responded to questions this year, I appreciate it, but again, we're waiting, always waiting until the eleventh hour on this. I'm a person that needs to read this and understand it, so to get it and then have to rush through this thing, although I think we did a better job this year, hopefully with the new administration, we're getting this months in advance, a preliminary budget, and we're able to ask questions and flesh this stuff out, so it's not a mad dash in December. I appreciate what the mayor is trying to do with this budget, but again, there's just too many maybes, there's too many what-ifs, especially with the whole new cast of people most likely coming in next year with the new administration. It's my recommendation that we take a much more conservative approach that would allow us to remain somewhat financially stable, and again, avoid having to crush people with double-digit tax increases, increases which we've had to do in the past. So I'm a big believer in fixing the roof while the, and making repairs when the sun is shining. I don't think it's shining all the way in the city, but it's there. We're not as in terrible condition as we were in the past. I don't make these motions lightly because I know that people are suffering and having a hard time paying their taxes, coupled with what's going on in the school district. But again, it, to me, it's, it was a simple argument that was made last week. If we don't do it this year, we're gonna do it next year. I'll, I'll be sitting here next year, and it won't be two-point-four percent, which is what we're, what I'm going to recommend. It'll be ten percent or twenty percent. We have a structural deficit, and it's going to continue to snowball unless we do these things. And again, my final point on this is just take a look at the trends. Take a look at when we don't raise taxes for a number of years in a row, and then we get crushed, and that's what will happen. At least that's my fear. And again, I want to make the point that this was recommended to us by the Pennsylvania Economy League. This was, from my understanding, a recommendation from, original recommendation from the business administrator to the mayor. So I think that council has to do the responsible thing. The one thing that we're doing, which is going to be another motion here, is to restate the amount of revenue that we receive from the potential sale of refuse receivables. Again, when I spoke to Mr. Bolzoni, this is a complicated transaction. There's no guarantee that we get this money, and even if we get it, and even if everything works out great, which would be fantastic, we're still going to have issues in the next year or two. We still have a revenue problem. So I'm going to make these, these motions. I hope that my colleagues would agree with me on this, and I think at least it gives us a little peace of mind going into next year, and that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Just as a reminder, we are on the question on the First Amendment to amend the real estate tax amount in the budget. Anyone else on the question? Just two points, I know you went through a lot there that I want to make. First, regarding the taxes, every budget has a number of moving parts. This budget happens to be a hundred and thirty-seven pages, so there's obviously going to be some items that, or shortfalls some items that come in above projections. I know people have had reservations in years past that the budgets weren't balanced, and the last three years with no tax increase, they certainly were. This year, we're on track to end with, with a small surplus. I don't see the need for the tax increase currently, and taxes eventually are going to have to go up. Councilman Gahn is correct on that. But with the new mayor coming in next year, who has already promised tax relief, I think that we should give her an opportunity to propose, you know, opening the budget, which is, would be her prerogative, and make any changes she would like to see. I don't see the need, especially with the timing, that taxpayers are getting hit pretty hard by the school district currently. Seven years ago was the opposite way around. The school district was in better shape and the city was, was struggling. It's just tough when it's, it's from all taxing bodies at the same time. I do agree with some of these other amendments that we are going to go through, and I will talk a little bit more. I know you hit on the changing of the garbage system, but I'll, I'll talk about that more when that amendment comes up. Anyone else on the question on the First Amendment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. The motion passes.
Thank you. I'd like to make a second motion, under city of Scranton, two thousand twenty operating budget, budgeted revenues, general fund. I'd like to amend account number zero-one point three zero-one point three zero-seven zero-six, account description from current real estate tax land millage rate, two-three-two point five-two-one mills, to current real estate tax land millage rate, two-three-nine point five-two-one mills.
Second, on the question?
Yes, on the question, I just want to take one second to explain this. So as I, again, I'm not making, taking these numbers out of thin air here. I was going back and forth over the last few days with Mr. Bolzoni and the Pennsylvania Economy League. So what the recommendation was, was to raise the millage seven points on the land. So the, Mr. Bolzoni had stated to me that nominal adjustment on the land component would have the least impact on the average property owner. The increase is borne more by those with larger parcels, which would be commercial or industrial interests, or those homeowners with larger parcels who can likely absorb the increase. In effect, it offers better dispersion. For example, if you have a typical property with an improvement value of ten thousand dollars and a land value of fifteen hundred dollars, the tax increase would be on the land component. So at two hundred and thirty-two point five-two-one mills, the tax liability on land is three hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. At two hundred and thirty-nine point five-two mills, which is what I, we're proposing here, the liability is three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents, or an increase of ten dollars and fifty cents. So out of all the recommendations that were given, this was the, the least punitive. And again, I want to make the point that overall, this is a two-point-four percent increase. It's a three percent increase on the land millage. And again, I want to state that this is necessary. According to our recovery coordinator, it is necessary. If we don't do it this year, we're going to be doing it next year and the year after that. So to ignore it this year and to wait for the next mayor to come in, I think that's shirking our responsibility as, as a council. We need to make sure that we are able to sustain ourselves fiscally. And again, with, with, in terms of the last few budgets, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, tho- you know, those might have been balanced on paper, but we've continued to have, we're relying on one-time revenue, sale of the sewer authority, so on and so forth. So again, I just, I don't make these motions lightly, but I do want to drive home the point to everyone that this is a recommendation from our recovery coordinator. If we don't do it this year, we're coming back next year, I'm going to be sitting here in December, and we're going to be raising it on people even higher. And the other point I want to make too is, I had the chance to read a two thousand seventeen report called Communities in Crisis: The Truth and Consequences of Municipal Fiscal Distress in Pennsylvania, nineteen seventy to two thousand fourteen. And I know some people sitting at home are probably saying, you know, every couple, every couple of years, you're raising taxes, when is it going to end? Your expenditures go up, your revenues either stay the same or they decay, they go down. The truth is that the, the recovery plan, the, this whole notion of an exit plan, this whole notion of Act forty-seven and distress status, claiming to have fixed Act forty-seven municipalities by forcing them out of the program, but not doing anything to repair the broken system, that's the state. The state has not done anything, in my estimation, that, especially after reading this report, for mun- not just only Scranton, but cities throughout the state, who continue to face not just only Scranton, but cities throughout the state, who continue to face these problems of crisis with the pension, crisis with not being able to raise enough revenue, year after year after year. And their solution is, back in 2014, we're gonna amend Act 47, we're gonna give you five years, and then we're gonna kick you out. We don't, the notion that the city is exiting Act 47 because somehow everything is going great, although we've made progress, that is just flat-out false. That is not, and if you read this report, it is stated in this report. So I just want to make sure that I state that, that there, this is a more complex problem than sometimes people make it out to be. Thank you.
Anyone?
Yeah, I'd like to speak on the question real quick. Pat, please. I've thought about this long and hard, because this is in fact a difficult decision, and I'm gonna use some notes. Usually, I speak spontaneously, but there's a lot going on with this budget, so I created some notes, if anybody sees me peeking down at them. And I decided that the real question to me is, why would I keep this city in recovery for years and years and years, and then just about when we're ready to exit successfully, suddenly ignore Pell's advice? And I sat down at that table less than six days ago, directly across from Jerry Cross and Matt Domenech, and it could have been more clear to me that they were recommending a 2.4% tax increase. And what the terms Jerry kept using were Scranton is experiencing revenue decay versus expenditure growth, which I think in layman's terms is our revenue is decreasing and our expenses are increasing. And, you know, Bill is right, they gave us a chart that, to me, answers any questions I may have had about the soundness or the wisdom behind this. Because you look back at the years past, when we had 0, 0, 0 tax increases, 2008, 2009, 2010, and it sounds amazing, and it looks good on paper. And then in 2011, they actually went down 11%. Well, that sounds great, too. But there's a natural repercussion to that action when our expenditures keep increasing. And then we got to the next three years, in 2012, it went up by 5%. 2013, it went up by 22%. And 2014, it went up by 57%. That type of an increase is appalling to most of our residents, and very difficult for most of our households to manage. I understand that. So for the average taxpayer, I'd rather do 2.4% this year, as recommended by Pell, which again, Mr. Gahin said, has been told to us will be about $10.50 a household, or less than $1 a month, than make some sort of unrealistic or unsustainable double-digit increase in years to come. In voting yes, I also believe that I'm looking out for the most vulnerable amongst us, which means a lot to me. The elderly, the disabled, single parents, one-income households, those who are economically disadvantaged or going through difficult times due to layoffs, sickness, or any other reason who are struggling. I do not want to create a situation where a tax increase is a true hardship for these people, our most vulnerable residents, who may be struggling to pay their taxes or even to save their homes. And that's going to happen next year or the year after, if we don't enact the 2.4% this year. In making the decision, I'm reminded of something my dad told me a long time ago. The right decision is not always an easy one, and it's certainly not always a popular one. But I am going to vote in favor of Mr. Gahin's amendments after much thought and deliberation. The decision is based on the facts and figures and the statistics as provided by Pell, on the opinions of Jerry Cross and Matt Domenech of Pell, who have guided us through the recovery to this point, where we are now successfully looking forward to leaving Act 47 in the summer of 2020. Because this decision will hopefully have only a small and minimal financial impact on most households throughout the city, that it will be more than bearable, I do believe that it's in the best interest of our city to make this decision at this time.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. It passes, motion two passes.
Okay, motion number three would be, I'd like to amend account number 01.380.38870, sale of assets, to decrease from $2,256,796.05 to $1,520,823.89.
Second. On the question?
On the question, this is the number that concerns me the most, because it is a one-time revenue source. So, we tried to, in conversations over the weekend, talking about these amendments, was trying to lower this number, so that even if we get in more than what we're budgeting, good, but then that's less than that we have to fill going in to next year. You know, if we were to keep it at that 2.225 number, we would be looking at probably 12% to 13% tax increase, just off the top, just to fill in that, to, next year, just to fill in that 2.2 million. But by lowering it, you know, we might only be starting off at about a 6.5%, 7%, you know, but that's also what's giving the administration, the new administration coming in, you know, hopefully some leeway to bring that number down then, too. But it's getting into these one-time revenue sources that gets you into trouble, because that's where you start creating those structural deficits. If you look at what happened down the street with the school district, is they just constantly, constantly used one-time revenues, and then it got to the point where it just couldn't be replaced. So I think lowering this number was an important part of getting me to support these amendments, and that's why I'm gonna be doing that. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Briefly on this one, I actually oppose this one more than the others, believe it or not. I understand what Councilman Donnie was saying, and it is a one-time revenue source. So if you oppose the one-time revenue source, just take it out entirely, then. The city has already had a commitment, prior to putting out any RFPs, for the sale of the receivables in excess of the $2.2 million that is being put in the budget. And the reason I so strongly support this change is not so much a budgetary issue, but it's in reference to the, our whole garbage billing system to begin with. The current system is broken. The fact of sending out $300 bills, and then 60% of people pay them, 40% don't, it's not working. Are there issues with changing to any sort of other system? Of course, there are going to be. I think putting it in the tax bill and spreading it across more people at a lower rate is the right approach. Again, that's something that we're gonna have to debate in length, at length, next year. But in order to fill the gap from moving from the current system to the new system, selling what's owed, I think is a smart solution. The current system isn't working, with Northeast Revenue, all the issues we've had there, the issues of big-time landlords not paying bills at all. If it's lumped into the taxes and you don't pay it, you get a tax sale. So you have to pay it, just like you have to pay your property taxes. And that's been the issue with the refuse, that people have looked at it as a, something that they made, that whether they want to pay it or not, some people just throw it in the garbage, and just figure, well, I'm never gonna sell my house, they can't come after me until the house is sold, which unfortunately, with the lien system, is true. So again, in regards to the budget, I think the budget number is actually conservative to begin with, at the 2.2 million. Moving it to 1.5, in my opinion, actually creates an even bigger surplus in the budget next year, if the assets are sold. If the assets are not sold, then you're still left with a $1.5 million deficit. So I think that this amendment is a middle ground, which you really can't go either way with it. I can understand taking it out of the budget entirely, and saying, we're just not gonna sell it. And I can understand the other end of it is saying, well, we're gonna change systems. But I think this kind of straddles the middle between, between both, and I don't think it's gonna work either way. Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion three passes.
I'd like to also make an amendment to amend mayor's office account number 4040-01.010.000000. Point 4040, other salary from $35,000 to $0.
Second. On the question?
Yes, I just want to explain this as well, and it's gonna be the same for the next few. So, one of the things that was done in this budget that I don't agree with is creating positions, but not really creating them. So what the administration had done was, apparently, they were gonna create a chief of staff position for the mayor's office, but it's not a line item in the budget. The money is located in the other salary. So, I don't know if we received a job description for that, I know we received some tonight, I haven't had a chance to go through it yet. But my concern with leaving the money, and I've had this conversation with the administration the last few days, leaving it in the other salary sets a precedent that we just, we don't have a check and a balance anymore as a city council. We're giving the administration free rein to maybe create it, maybe move it around, maybe give somebody a raise with it. There's just too much, there's too much wiggle room, to me. So, my concern would be that, again, we would set a precedent. If you're gonna create the position, create it, put it in the budget, give us a job description, and then I would love to make a decision on it. But until that happens, I'm gonna make several amendments now to take the other salary down, and if the position's gonna be created in the future, just put it in the budget.
Yes, I'd like to speak to this as well. I agree with Bill's amendment, although partially for different reasons, partially for the same reason. When we attended our public caucus, again, six days ago, this is part of the area of law where I practice, which is best employment practices, and one of my pet peeves here is the fact that there are no job descriptions. Because the fact of the matter is, I'm not against some of these jobs, but no one saw fit to provide me with any job description rationale or reason, although I must edit that, because today at noon, one job description appeared in my box. To me, the days of creating jobs that have no responsibility or no accountability are over. Job descriptions assist employees in knowing what is expected of them, job descriptions assist in performance evaluations, and they assist in managing employees and issuing discipline if needed. They also give the public confidence that when a job is being created and funded with public dollars, that it's a real job, that it is needed, that it will be managed appropriately, and to me, this should be the official end of no-work jobs. Going forward, I am insisting on culpability and responsibility. The same old status quo in this area is no longer good enough for me, and I know it's not good enough for many others, including you guys sitting down there, and many of the gentlemen sitting up here. What I will not do is approve jobs that have no accountability associated with them, no definable tasks, or no essential functions. Therefore, it is incumbent on me to agree with Mr. Gahin's motion to amend and to remove these jobs from the budget. I also agree with a comment that Mr. Gahin made at the meeting, that by creating these jobs in the budget, kind of these no-name jobs, it does also take away the appropriate checks and balance functions of council, which as we all know now more than ever, is needed. And so for that reason, I'll be agreeing and voting for the amendment.
Anyone else? I'm gonna comment on this one and the next three, actually, all at once. I will be voting for the next four amendments. I agree with what my colleagues had mentioned, and again, as I mentioned earlier, we do have a new mayor coming in in January. If she wants to open the budget and make changes, at that time, she has that prerogative to do so and send that down to council for a vote. I do agree with, you know, the idea of just putting a number in the budget and saying, well, they could do with it what they want, isn't the right way to run a city, particularly the fact on this one specifically, that they keep, the idea of a chief of staff for the mayor keeps being floated around, and a salary number of $35,000 was put in there. You're not getting a chief of staff for a large city for $35,000. It just doesn't make sense. And finally, because I'm gonna wrap these all into one, on the last amendment, we're gonna deal with the idea of a public safety director. That's been done in the past, I don't think it worked. Again, if the ma, the new mayor wants to propose those types of changes, that's gonna be up to her to open the budget, send it down to council, and we can debate those at the time. But I will be voting yes for the next, next few amendments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and motion four passes.
I'd like to amend DPW Garage's account number 4040-01.080.00085.4040. Other salary from $45,000 to $0.
Second. On the question?
On the question, with this one, I believe it was for a second shift mechanic, which I'm not really against, but again, as I mentioned to Mr. Bolzoni, it has to be put in the budget. And he actually, I believe, yesterday or at some point this weekend, agreed with me that really, these should have been put in the budget. So this will have to wait until next year.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion five passes.
I'd like to amend the single tax office account number 4040-01.090.0000.4040. Other salary from $45,000 to $0.
Second. On the question?
This was a position that was going to be created, I believe, if the single tax office received the responsibility of collecting the payroll preparation tax. Again, it's way too arbitrary. Either it's in there, or it's not, and we don't even know if they're definitely gonna collect the payroll preparation tax. So that's the reason that I made that amendment. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and motion six passes.
I'd like to amend the fire department account number 4040-01.011.00078.4040. Other salary from $250,000 to $205,000.
Second. On the question?
On the question, there's such a large amount in here because of some other things that actually should be in there, like, I believe, a retirement incentive and something else Mr. Bolzoni had mentioned to me. The, the position was originally budgeted at $45,000 for, I believe, a public safety manager or public safety director. Again, I don't necessarily disagree with that position, but we don't know enough about it, so I really can't, you know, make an educated decision on it, so that's the other reason that I took that out.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes ha, the ayes have it, and motion seven passes. If anyone wishes to speak specifically on the proposed amendments to the budget prior to the final vote, you may do so at this time. I think we could allot two minutes per speaker.
Joan Hodewann, a city resident and taxpayer. I want to compliment Mr. Gahn on the careful analysis, thoughtful way he has presented his amendments. And as much as I detest taxes, I have to concur that it's unrealistic to avoid raising taxes until it has to be done catastrophically. And I think most people would agree that the major reason that's done is so that politicians can get elected, which doesn't really apply to Wayne Evans this time, but in the past, I think that was a major driver. Nobody likes to raise taxes and then face reelection. But, when you've got revenues balanced against expenditures, the only way you can increase revenues is to increase the tax base, which means we have to bring more residents and commercial businesses into Scranton. Or, you can focus on collecting delinquencies, and you know what our track record has been on that, both with taxes and fees. Or, you can reduce fraud, waste, and abuse, or a combination of all three. Until we find an effective way to do that, you have to then look at cutting expenditures. And what happens when you do that? Well, you end up with a city hall that needs a multimillion-dollar renovation. And I think down the road, you're gonna see the same thing with the Serenti Building. You've seen what the track record's been with our firehouses, that we've had a lot of emergency legislation in the past five years, that I can recall, to fix roofs and other major repairs, because they had long been neglected. In other words, we had no long-term maintenance plan for any of our facilities. And the list goes on. So again, as much as I do not like the idea of my taxes going up at all, I think it's unrealistic, if not foolish, to think that we can kick that can down the road without making the fundamental changes we need to make. And I don't really think we've made the really hard decisions in how to increase our revenues in terms of things like expanding the tax base, collecting all delinquencies, and eliminating fraud, waste, and abuse. Those are systemic problems that nobody's found a way to address. So, Mr. Gahn, I agree with you. 2.4% is reasonable. 2.4% is reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Missing from here is an expense, which is the stormwater. Are you telling us you're kicking the can down?
Participation's only in reference to the amendments.
Well, I think you're making a big mistake. I certainly, I thought the 2.4 personally should be 2.4 on land and improvements, because that's where the biggest hit is, on the land. But, I'm just very upset that you are not addressing all of it, just picking and choosing the apples that you want from the tree, and the heck with the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have to reintroduce myself, or no? Okay. Heard enough of that. I'm just a little concerned about the land tax as opposed to structure tax, because structures are what are the cause of all of the need to expend money with fire departments. And it's like I said, when I bought that lot back in, I think it was 2004, January 1st, I owned it. And the taxes were $333 a year. I thought, a little high for a lot of nothing, but, okay. And now, it's like 750. If you're a little late with the taxes, and it's threatening to go up more with the school district and everything, add this to the school district, and we might be talking 10% again. And it's getting to the point where, you know, I'm starting to wonder if it wouldn't be just best to walk away from it, you know? Nobody in the neighborhood is ever gonna buy that lot. It's undevelopable, and it's very expensive every year. And it's starting to become a burden just to pay for it. You know, I could use a night out instead of more and more taxes every year on that lot. Furthermore, there's a bunch of trees that were on it, and now they're getting big, and I'm probably gonna have to come up with $2,000 or $3,000 just to lower the height of the trees, because I don't dislike trees. I like the trees. You can walk in off of there, off the street, and sit on a hot summer day, and within a minute or so, you realize you have a lot more oxygen in your system, but it's a lot of money for 32 by 170. And by the way, it's about eight feet short of what the city said it was when it was sold to me, so I have to take that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Finance?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend a final vote of Item 7D as amended.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I agree with everything that Joan said. I would just like to add that to expand the revenue, I think we need help from two governing, to expand our tax revenue and our tax base, I think we need help from two governing bodies, one being the county in terms of reassessment, and the second being the state of Pennsylvania. Because if you read the report that Mr. Gohin brought up before, it outlines pretty good how, although we're leaving Act 47 distressed status, we're no better off than we were. And that's because of Pennsylvania's antiquated laws on how municipalities across the state are able to function.
Anyone else?
Yes, I do have some comments, and again, bear with me, they're a little bit longer than probably most people would like, but it's my first year voting on the budget, and it was a 130 or 40-page document. Quickly on the procedure, since it was the first time I had seen this process, I was very glad to see that council spent time and energy preparing 10 pages of what I thought were good, solid questions. Trust me, we had more, but we decided to just put forth the ones we felt were the best ones, and the ones that would help us obtain the most information on the budget, and the ones that would guide our decision-making process. My concern is, the answers to those questions were put into our mailboxes one half hour before we sat down to caucus with Pell and other members of the administration. I've never been a game player, and to me, we're all here in the best interest of the city and its residents, but that process threw me off a little bit. I would have liked to have seen them in advance. I also want to make it clear to everyone that while my background is not in finance, I as well realize a budget is a moving document. It's subject to change, and it's malleable, and for the most part, you're predicting the future based on past performance. And Mr. Bolzoni consistently said, "Plan, execute, and adjust" are the tenets of creating a budget, and I want to say that I understand that. But a little bit more on the process. Two weeks ago, on our Monday meeting, we asked for a Plan B. And I have to be candid, I was hoping this was where we were all going to come to an agreement. To me, Plan B was where we could maybe meet in the middle, we could all unanimously present the administration and Mayor La Cognetti in 2020 with a workable budget with a united front. Rest assured, I want to choose optimism over pessimism, and I want to choose faith in the future over fear of the past. But I do believe the administration and the council owe a duty to the public to try and come together, but we never did receive that Plan B despite our timely request. And that, as well, made me wonder. Now, relative to the merits on the budget, I'll go over these quickly. Most of them have already been simultaneously covered by my councilmates. I share in some of the concerns regarding the revenue sources, the potential sale of the trash fee delinquents. I think that's a little speculative, which by the way, I still remain opposed to that on an equitable basis. I don't know the timing of that. I know some people have called that a very complicated process. I'm concerned if any of the moving parts related to that don't work, that we're going to be out a couple million dollars. And while it sounds nice, I share concern about the alleged reduction in the trash fee itself. I'm concerned about the timing of the reduction of the trash fee, and I'm concerned about the addition of the trash fee to the property tax bill. I'm not opposed to it. I just really don't think, sitting here right now, I have been provided enough information on the logistics of it. And most importantly, while I feel this budget is very well-intentioned, and again, I commend Mayor Evans for what he's accomplished in five months, and his dedication and commitment to the city, I'm not 100% sure that the trash fee was well thought out in terms of execution. And I reiterate what Mr. Gohin has repetitively said, how we can ask a commercial entity or a business to pay $250 in a trash fee when they may already be paying for private hauling. We're doing our best to change the business privilege and mercantile tax, which has consistently been called archaic, to the payroll tax, and now all of a sudden, we're throwing one more thing at businesses that might want to lead them out of the city. And the next issue is the homeowner. How do you say to a homeowner, "You owe us $250, but the three-unit house next door owes the same amount," and they'll obviously be putting out triple the garbage? So I do have concerns in the back of my head about those issues. I am confident, however, in the transfer from the business privilege mercantile to the payroll tax. I also remain an ardent advocate of that, and I do believe that that will come to fruition and will assist our city businesses sometime next year. Now, I just really want to briefly go over one small example of what has kind of driven me crazy professionally about this process, because I'm a person who relies on documentation a lot in making decisions. Someone in IT or the IT department had asked us for a car, and I thought we had rightly written back to them and said, "Well, listen, do we pay mileage to the employees? If we do, can we have their job descriptions? And if we do pay mileage, can you send us copies of all the mileage bills?" Because to me, that's a simple analysis. If we're paying a certain amount in mileage each month, is it more or less than what it would cost to buy or lease a car? Again, we got no documents back, so I don't know if records aren't being kept, or if records are being kept and they just don't want me to see them. But nonetheless, those types of things would have went a far way in helping me make educated decisions. On a separate issue, we asked for a legal opinion. That gave me and some others some cause for concern. It's not proper to talk about it outside of an executive session, but it is proper to say that no legal opinion was ever provided to us, despite my written request for one. And I made it very clear that I would want that prior to voting. But as Mr. Gohin alluded to earlier, my final tipping point came with regard to the rising health insurance costs. And to be very candid with everybody, prior to sitting at this table six days ago with Pell, and prior to them explaining to me what I thought was very credibly why we needed a 2.4% tax increase, I was just gonna vote no on the budget altogether because I was so taken aback by the healthcare costs. Let me preface this so I'm abundantly clear. I do not deny anyone, any city employee or any union employee, the right to healthcare coverage. Do not think that is my issue here, because it is not. As most of us know, the city is self-insured, and I ended up doing my own numbers, and I went back three years. In 2018, total healthcare costs budgeted, I rounded these off, $16,123,000. In 2019, total healthcare costs budgeted was $16,888,000. This year, total healthcare costs budgeted are up to $18,644,000. So we're up $1,700,000 from one year ago, and we're up $2.5 million from two years ago. And when I went back and I read the explanations in the budgets, they basically said that they underbudgeted each year. Now, I'm not unreasonable. I understand that catastrophic health events occur, and I understand that people want and deserve the best medical treatment available. Rest assured, I have no objection to that. But what I can and won't accept is a simple answer that we underbudgeted. We sit up here in a fiduciary role, as a protector and as a watchdog of the public's money. And again, those answers just simply are not good enough for me. I expect more, I want more, and the city deserves better. I want someone or some entity looking at these healthcare costs daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, or annually. And as I said to the gentlemen seated at this table last Wednesday, this is an area where I do maintain some element of expertise. My firm works with private and public companies every day to try and control healthcare costs. And with all due respect, it's not fair to blame the unions or the collective bargaining agreements. If I had a dollar for every time I heard that in the last five months, I'd be rich. A collective bargaining agreement is a contract between two parties negotiated at arm's length. Key word being negotiated. It is then up to each party to enforce their respective rights. I do not believe the city has adequately managed healthcare costs, and if they have, no one has provided me with any affirmative written evidence of the same, even though I specifically asked for it. We should have an aggressive third-party health insurance consultant, someone who provides the administration, the controller, and council with an audit, a review, and an analysis. Someone who can come in here and can mandate creative solutions and some ingenuity to give the city ideas on how to control these costs. My firm deals with these consultants all the time, and they're worth their weight in gold. You've heard me speak previously about grant writers and how they can pay for themselves. Note, that's one other thing, I'd like to have a grant writer in this budget, but that didn't happen. These healthcare consulting companies, or singular healthcare consultant, can pay for themselves as well. The savings can be significant, and they can be long-term, and yes, they can be done within the confines of a collective bargaining agreement. When I asked for copies of the written reports authored by our healthcare consultant, I was advised via email, quote, "That someone provides the rationale of the range of healthcare costs, and they do not generate any reporting or spreadsheets," end quote. I must repeat, that is not good enough for me, and it was not good enough in the past, and it should not be good enough anymore. I raise right now as a red flag that the unsustainable rise of healthcare costs in this city appears to me to be wholly unmanaged, appears to go unanalyzed, and appears to be rubber-stamped each year without analysis, and it's wholly unacceptable. I've not been provided with one iota of documentation to show me that these costs have been reviewed, analyzed, or examined in writing by a third-party healthcare consultant, someone who's an expert in this area, who can think innovatively, who can help Scranton contain these costs, contain them now, and who is also simultaneously dedicated to protecting the rights of our employees at the same time. I'm almost done. I want to repeat in conclusion that I weighed my decisions on this budget heavily. I looked at the pros and the cons, and I did a risk-benefit analysis, and I studied the budget and the numbers very carefully, especially with respect to the 2.4% tax increase. Because you know, for me, it would be very easy, of all the people, to take the easy way out and to walk out of here with only 27 days left and only a few meetings, to vote no on the taxes, and to let what is gonna happen to the city happen, and not on my watch. But ladies and gentlemen, I refuse to do that. I refuse to be that person. It's not who I am or what I stand for. I'm here, and I'm in this seat because people trusted me, and they trusted me to do the right thing at all times. And I refuse to let people down by taking the easy way out. My votes tonight are made with my intellect and my conscience, and with the mandate that I sit here in a fiduciary role for the taxpayers of this city. Thank you.
I just want to add one thing, Mr. Rogan. One thing that I hope people don't forget is, in regard, Attorney Dempsey just sparked my memory. In terms of converting the refuse bill into the real estate tax bill, this is all being done under the umbrella of major litigation in terms of the trash fee, the class action lawsuit. So that there's another concern that I had about this. So just, I just want people to keep that in mind as well.
Just on that point, and I won't belabor it, but I'm just of the belief on the trash fee, that the system is completely broken, and we have to do something different. Much more discussion on that in the next couple of years. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunning?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
No. I hereby declare Item 7D as amended legally and lawfully adopable.
7E, previously tabled for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 183, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Spec and Associates and Barry Isid and Associates/Spec/Isid Partnership for the City of Scranton Downtown Scranton Connectivity Plan.
What is the recommendation of the Chair for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend a final vote of Item 7E.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I don't disagree with what the mayor is attempting to do. I think walkability and connectivity is a good thing. However, in this specific case, we're going with a bidder, a company, now two companies together, who has bid much higher than the next lowest. So to me, in a city that's distressed, we should always try to go with the lowest bidder. So I cannot, I agree with the thought, but I cannot vote for this based on the amount of money we're spending in terms of where they stand on their proposals. So I'll be voting against it.
I as well would like to make a comment on this. I had concerns about this from the very beginning, basically due to the cost that's involved. And because I had those concerns, I've sat down with the mayor no less than two times personally, and I've spoken to him on the phone no less than two times as well. And after speaking with him, but also, again, after using my own independent judgment, I think this, this is more forward-thinking than we think it is. I think it's environmentally conscious, what I like. I was speaking to someone at a cocktail party the other night, and he said, "Mary, I have three, four kids between the ages of 20 and 30, and their sole issue for voting in the presidential race is the environment." And I think that's important to a lot of people, and I think that this connectability study will be helpful in that regard. I also think it could be helpful for the economy, to the extent that in the event we can connect up Lackawanna out into West Side, down South Washington Avenue into South Side, up near the hospitals, et cetera, I think students from the medical school, maybe students from the colleges, will start to live in those further-off areas and use their bicycles to ride to these places. So I'm hoping maybe it will induce additional rentals, and I'm hoping maybe it will induce further purchases. And with regard to the money, I had said before, I think it was either in caucus or sitting up here, Mayor Evans had told me that most of that money is coming from money that was set aside from grant proceeds. I believe it's about $190,000 or $195,000. But more recently, he contacted me and told me that the University of Scranton also entered into a community partnership with us, and they will be giving us $25,000 toward this study. So when I put all those things together, and when I look at this under a totality of the circumstances approach, I do think it is in the best interest of the city. I think it's forward-thinking. I always like to think, what could this lead to five or 10 years down the line? And I think this will have a very positive impact on the city, and I'm going to be voting in favor of it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to make one more comment. The one thing that confused me about this whole process is, the proposal that we'll be voting on is gonna cost, and I realize there's grant money involved there, but it's gonna cost $218,000. The lowest proposal was $90,050. So there is a large difference in terms of dollars there. What confuses- What confuses me is the narrative that was presented by the administration. They find no distinct cost advantage in recommending the Spec-Isit partnership. All the firms submitting are qualified. So to me, if they're all qualified, and there's no distinct cost advantage, then why not go with the lowest bidder? That's one of the reasons, I agree with what Attorney Dempsey's saying, and I think this is a good project. I still, for the life of me, can't figure out why they just don't go with the lowest bidder here, and that's the reason I have to vote against this.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunnehugh?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
No.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes, I hereby declare Item 7E legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned.